No, it's not. There we go.
All right.
Let's see for Charlotte and Mira.
Charlotte, can you hear us?
No, is that standing up? Everything looks like it's.
I think it's that way because of the, um, dog.
Oh, yeah.
I tried to point it, phrase it again.
A little bit.
But he's calmed down now, so.
I can hear you.
Thank you. Actually, I liked it a little bit a ways for the, they could hear Jim.
For good?
Yeah, it's probably okay. At least for the most part, we'll be here. There you go. Sitting in front of the room. All right, I'd like to begin this meeting on April twenty first. Happy Wednesday. Um, it is six o'clock. We'll begin with the warrants, payroll number ninety. I'd like to make motion that we approve payroll ninety for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable number ninety-one for ninety-six thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and sixteen cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
And this one is, most of it is for RSU twelve, our monthly, um, bill.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Yeah, eighty-seven thousand. It was about eighty-five thousand. All right, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, okay.
Right. And let's. Initial that. All right, next, we have, um, the opening of bids for the assessors agent for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, and I believe we have one bid?
One bid.
One bid? And we will open it. Maybe. And the bid is for RCS, Assessment Services Incorporated. This is, um, from Josh Berry, who is our present, um, assessor. And this is for a one-year contract from July twenty twenty-five to June twenty twenty-six. And the total amount is, um, twenty-four thousand dollars. Or two thousand dollars per month. Uh, any comments or feedback?
Nope. Thanks for the submission.
Yes, we appreciate the submission. Um. We can make a decision now, or we can hold off and talk about it. What do you all think? We know Josh, and we know his capability. We're not meeting for two weeks. I'm, I'm happy to. You've been working with, you've been working with him already. How do you feel?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Plus, we didn't have any other submissions, so.
Yeah, well, you didn't. And, and we really like him. Yep. Um, so I'd like to move that we, um, approve RCS's, uh, proposed contract for twenty-four thousand for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's all in favor?
Um, all right.
By the way, I, just to add a note here, he says that our team consists of five certified main assessors, two residential commercial property listers, and a GIS mapping coordinator with a combined twenty-five-plus years' experience. We look forward to handling the assessing needs of your town. Thank you for your consideration in this. He, um, has a lot of, um, tech capability, so it makes it a lot easier for him to be able to go out and, you know, take pictures immediately, and they immediately show up and, um, just getting rid of a lot of the, the paperwork that, um, we used to have to deal with. He also has here that, um, we had talked about, and it is a warrant article that, um, we would be interested in the future in looking at a three-year contract. And he does have numbers for us, uh, for that, that, um, we will actually share in the warrant, um, article. And I'll just read them off now. I don't know, um, it's not something we're voting on today, just something he shared. And that is, um, his contract would every year go up a little bit. This, from July twenty twenty-five, twenty-six would be twenty-four thousand, as he's put the bid in now, for the following year would be twenty-seven thousand. And for the third year would be thirty thousand. For a three-year contract, it would be eighty-one thousand. But we are only for this year able to do one, one year, because that's what we, we've, um, approved from the town. In the, in the warrant, we will have a request to offer three-year bids. Any other comments or anything?
Well, we got it.
Yes, yeah. Really liking him. He's a nice guy, young guy, just, um, so helpful. Um, all right, next on our agenda is citizens' issues. Do we have any citizens' issues? Jeff, did you have one?
Yes, my, on, on the assessment, I, I put in a, uh, I, a tree growth plan a month ago. I hadn't, never heard anything about it, so. A little response would be good.
All right.
Um, okay, excellent.
Yeah.
I, I, generally, I showed by the last week, so I'm not, she's sure of it yet. It's, it's known, but.
Yep.
A little, little response back would be good. Just let me know that he's got it, he's willing.
Yes. All right, yeah. Please, we'll check into it. Stayed on roads. We had something happen this weekend?
Tree down, old post officer, fire department, handling. CMP, they're pretty good, both. Open road backup, and I'm sure they would down.
Was power off?
Fire was off, so. How long it took?
So I was actually, um, out of town.
Oh.
Uh.
I don't lose it, but you. It affected Kenny and up to, uh, the habitable suburbs.
I had him, um, about, let's say, eight, eight thirty, and the road was clear, and what time you'll, so it worked out great for me.
Good planning.
Deer on the side of the road. Remove that, inside, right? Uh, cold patch, we get cold patch tomorrow out of the one that's actually going to be put on the road, if you, hopefully maybe this week or next week, sure. And waiting on, I'm going to talk to Jack, you know, if he's going to grade the roads. It's just a matter of, um, scheduling, when he can fit it. Things are in the works, and you'll have to let me know about up around, so.
Yep.
So. And that, and that can wait, I mean, no big rush, I might just figure. Isn't it like Father Mother's Day and after Columbus Day, you're supposed to do your planting?
Well, this day was always my barometer for planting.
Well, that's what I was always told, so that's why I just wanted to get it in the works, because that's coming right up here.
And if we find another.
Um, no flower going, I, I can't really grass grow.
All right, I will put that on my list.
Yep, and let me say, just, you know, let me know, so if you want to build a plan or if you want to do. What I was kind of envisioning was, as I talked late about it, just women area, with like junipers ready in, maybe some flowers under the sign, help further.
I would say not junipers. We, junipers are out here, like.
Or not. Yeah. Uh, landscaping type.
Yep, yep. Some heather or something would be really nice. Heather's blooming right now, as Jeff knows. I made him look at it.
Yes, you did.
Like, whether he wanted to or not, so I turn around and look at that. Um.
Whatever he decided, you know, all of a sudden.
I think the deer won't eat.
Uh, they do eat the, they do like to get to it in the winter. Uh, Charlotte, the conversation we're having, um, earlier, Jim had mentioned that he wanted to get some loan to put around the new sign that we have. And, uh, we need to look at it to figure out whether we want to do boxes and, you know, flower boxes rather than put plants in the ground. Um, so we'll look at that, um, in the next couple of weeks, and then let him know what, what we'll do about it. But that's a new area, and we want to, uh, landscape it. Doing something that keeps it as low maintenance as possible.
This topsoil is seventy percent bone, thirty percent okay, it's cool coast.
Yeah, I've got that before, you know, from, uh, wood. Yep, yep.
Good, good stuff.
Yep. Yep.
That's what I would recommend, let's say, a no flower guy, but I think that's what you'd want, something decent.
So you're not a flower child, huh?
No, I don't, I'm from there.
Okay, yeah, I, I will put it on my list and, and get back to you. Sorry. Um, any updates on committee reports? No? Um, I know it was a sort of a combined committee. Um, do you want to talk at all about that? I know you weren't, you're not on the cemetery committee, but you were on the history committee, and I think you were part of that meeting, wasn't you?
I think, uh, oh, I think really want to make sure, the, the committee's never worked here. Uh, which certainly makes sense, just in mind that we, since two thousand seventeen, the history committee did a cemetery tour.
Very good.
Uh, and the cemetery committee would like to, to do that.
Do that again.
But since you brought it up, there was a question that I wanted to get back to Ashley on. Uh, they, the cemetery committee understands them. They, they have the understanding that they can't raise money for their purposes. Uh, and I don't understand why not, because the history committee, until we incorporated the friends, used to get money, donations, and especially, I learned in a training session two years ago, it belongs to the town, it's not the history committee's money, but it gets raised and it was used at the, with select ones, okay, for history purposes. Why couldn't the cemetery committee receive money that would come into Ashley's sake, and be set aside for a fund to be used for cemetery purposes?
There, there is money that does get donated, and, and in fact, I know April's dealing with one, an issue right now. Um, April, do you want to talk about that? Because I know you've, um, dealt with the, the loss behind it.
Yes, yes. So there were a lot of questions about the cemetery committee fundraising. Park Pino in particular was really interested in some very like, um, a sort of, you know, selling things and marketing and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
And we weren't so sure about that. Like, it's very clear that we could get donations to the town for a purpose, that would be available to a committee.
Yeah.
Um, and we've tried to make that really clear to them, but it, it's complicated, so it's, it's hard. I understand, it's a difficult subject. But yes, donations are totally fine.
Okay.
Uh, we did check in with the MMA and the lawyer, and the basic takeaway was like, towns are supposed to ask for money from the taxpayers and then use it for the purposes they were given the money for. Um, you certainly can get donations, and that's lovely, as long as it's for a purpose that was already approved by town meeting. If not, you can't really take a donation, you have to wait for town meeting to approve that purpose. Um, and it's not really appropriate for towns to go, like, hold bake sales or fundraise, uh, in that sort of assertive way. That's more of a nonprofit role. So, you know, I think the kind of fundraising that the friends do, that's probably, I'm guessing, I don't know the history, but that's probably why they broke up, was so that they could have memberships and hold galas and like, do that kind of fundraising. Uh, as opposed to sort of passively being like, donations are nice, we'll take donations. So it's, it's a little bit of a fuzzy line, but that's what the lawyer and the MMA seem to sort of bring on.
No, that makes sense. You're right. I, I had about Park's sales ideas in, 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 in.
Right, and we've encouraged him, and it'd be great if he wanted to start a nonprofit for the cemetery side, to start doing that. You know, certainly would be appropriate for a nonprofit cemetery association with fundraisers. Um, but the, the cemetery committee already has almost nine thousand dollars in their account to spend. It's not, you know, and their mission as far as the town is concerned is very focused. It was based on state law, it's just the veterans' graves and the old cemeteries and maintenance. Um, and what Park is picturing is a more expansive mission, which is great for a nonprofit, though. Didn't really fit into the town scheme.
Let's just say that, that there's that element there's, in the mix, did not get resolved. They are looking for some type of five oh one C three umbrella, because they don't want to do it themselves. I, I don't understand.
Are the friends interested in taking that off?
We did not talk.
Okay.
But, so I, I can't speak for how friends might feel about it.
Yeah, okay. The umbrella thing, that is not a thing for the town committee.
Right.
That's something for nonprofits, so.
That is common for nonprofits, it's, that, who can do that, why they're bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
It's, uh, to serve as a, uh.
Incubator.
But it's okay, it's, there's a, it's a good technical term for it, but basically you can make, take in the money for somebody else, and manage to be there. So, yeah, there's, but there's a good technical term, lack of spacing on it.
Good.
Though, and I think we are not included, the president have included.
I just don't understand, like, how much money do they need? That's what doesn't make sense to me.
I, I.
They, nine thousand dollars, it's been sitting there. Plus, they got a, a, a donation of forty thousand for.
Well, it's one cemetery.
One, one cemetery.
Right, and they have several special.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got, well, you might know, the Tarbox Cemetery has six thousand just for that cemetery.
That's, we've been kicking that in for fifty years.
Yeah.
You see how much that's grown?
Yeah. Okay.
And there's a shadow, yeah, and so on. So, yeah, some cemeteries with families have kicked in the money for that cemetery.
Right, right. So they have way more money than any other of our committees. They don't, I don't really, yeah, like Lisa said, why do you need to fundraise when you already have all these funds that you're not using, but?
Well, I, I think looking ahead, because I think we, we, we will work together in terms of doing some slight cemetery tour type activity and, and sharing information, and, and we had actually offered to them, we had friends, uh, to let them, uh, host cemetery information, uh, on our website. Again, for, for his, his, again, because genealogy is a big part of what people come to friends are, are all about. So, uh.
And there's seventy, I believe, a seventy-one or seventy-two cemeteries, but not all of those, in fact, many of them are not accessible. They're on private, private property, so you know, it's like when you have money, but you can't, you're not going to deal with seventy-two cemeteries. It's like, how many do you actually, can you actually access and keep clean? And I, and I know Bailey and her crew has been doing a great job of trying to clean. I've seen the ones down by Woods, Woodway or whatever that is, um, I can see from the road. It's like, wow, that looks really clean. But I, I don't think that, you know, and it's a slow process, she also said that, and it's not costly, it's time consuming. So, you know, there's, there's a big difference there. And I know her wish was that she could find more people to do the work, not that we need more money. And so, um, you know, trying to support her with that, but we have, this one has done a ton of research on, on this issue, and that, basically, this is where we landed, that if you're a committee for the town, it can be started and stopped, that you, um, you know, that we're not going to go out there and be this, like, act like a five oh one C three and.
Yeah, but, you know, all entrepreneurs, they're ready, they're, whether.
Yep, exactly. It's democracy too, because the town meeting holds perks, right? That's important, and so it wouldn't really be appropriate for them to raise lots of money or an expansive mission, like, you have your purpose, and the town meeting gives you the money for the purpose, and you spend the money to earn this for a year, and then you come back and ask for more money. And I think that sort of slow and very, um, narrow process is a little frustrating for the more ambitious people on the cemetery committee, and I get that. But they could start a nonprofit.
But it's very deliberate for a reason.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Well, last, bottom line is that we, we will, you know, work together.
Which is great, great. Make the, certainly pick up on where, what you guys did before and not have to start from scratch, which is great.
Yeah, remember, that, that event was well-attended, and people liked it, and people talked about it a long time after it happened, and.
We're not still waiting to hear after.
Yeah, yeah.
But we got.
Ten stories on the right hand, I think, I have some.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, any updates from the copy? Maybe? No? Okay, all right. Moving on. Uh, select board business, um, something about an online accessible ballot? April?
Yeah, we've done this in the past. Um, so during the state and federal elections, we get help from the state, and we have to set up, um, an accessible ballot, use our accessible machine and all the stuff the state provides. With a local election, we don't have any of that, or any of that facilitation over the state. Um, so the recommendation is that we do try to make our elections accessible to folks with disabilities. Um, you don't have to, you know, there's not like a la, uh, legal obligation, exactly, but it's sort of a civil rights thing, and somebody can complain, and, you know, that kind of obligation, I guess. Um, so I've been thinking about it this year, I've been kind of on the fence, because there's no contested elections. Everyone's running unopposed thus far. Um, there's the RSU budget, so that could be a little interesting, I think, for folks. Um, but it does cost us a hundred dollars per ballot, and what it is, is it's a, uh, it's online ballot, but somebody who was, um, visually impaired or physically impaired couldn't get to the polls, there, I don't know exactly how it works, but there's a way they fill out a ballot, and then, um, because I've only had this happen once before, I think what happens is they can do it digitally, and then the, the company that you work with to make this ballot, like, hand couriers it to you on election day, so you can count it. I'll have to, like, research the process again. So the hundred dollars a page, we have the RSU bu, ballot, which the RSU will not pay for, and we have the local ballot. And I think what we did before, you might remember Jeff, Jeff was here at the time, is we just did the local ballot, because that seemed more contested and interesting. I don't know if it's workable this time or not. I think we have one person who's used it, um.
So to, to learn per page is, is for the person that uses it?
No, no.
Or it's just a one-time?
Overall, one time. So, I mean, the, the difficulty is, it may not get used at all.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and we're up to.
What happens if, if somebody needs it and we don't have this set up?
Then, yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, they can have an aide help them. So if they came to the polls with an aide, or if they did an absentee ballot, an aide can help them. So there are other ways for people who can't get to the polls to vote. But, I don't know. I thought I'd bring it up since we did it once before. I don't really know what to recommend. Did he have that absentee ballot for this?
Yes. Yep. So seems to me, if you have an absentee ballot, that if I had, if I needed support, or if I got an absentee ballot, I could have somebody drop me at home. I feel like anybody that has that issue is, either has done it somehow before, or they just don't worry about it.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I feel like the absentee ballot makes it so much easier, because if I can't read, for example, I could forget, just literacy issues that I have, that, you know, I would want to have an absentee ballot, I could go home and have somebody read it to me.
Okay.
Um, if I couldn't see, somebody could read it to me. Um, so I feel like the absentee ballot sort of covers
Yeah.
that issue.
I think if you're visually impaired, you may have a computer that allows you to independently, without an aide.
Without somebody there.
Online. I think that's, that's probably a, yeah, selling point.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, you could always have an aide, or like, I could go as the town clerk and deliver the ballot and be the aide, or they could vote my presence, actually. I took into that, if I could leave the aide and the.
You said it was used once before. Do you know if this individual still has that need, or does the individual know that there are some other options, like absentee ballot or whatever?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the individual still moves here. I think they were in the process of moving, and I don't know if that.
How soon do we have to have a decision on this?
Um, I don't think it's super urgent. Absentee ballots are going to become available May thirteenth, and I think they can set this up pretty fast. When's your next meeting after this one? May fifth?
Fifth.
Fifth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could probably squeak it in at, at that meeting, but I just.
Yeah, I, I just think everybody should have the right to vote and, and should be able to have access to voting. But it just feels like we, we have some options, and how many do we have to have?
Can we redundant?
Yeah, right.
Unless we don't do the absentee, and only do online, and everybody that would have done absentee can do the online.
No, that would be really, yeah, yeah. After, so that you have, uh, absentee, just feels like you're giving people an option to to get whatever support that they need.
Hmm.
Yeah, so, but, but I'd like to, if it's okay, and if it's okay with you to be able to just think about this a little.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it, we'll do it sometime, let's go.
All right, uh, next we have, um, a, actually two resignations. Uh, the first resignation is from Kevin McMan, McMan?
McMahon.
McMahon. Mc, no, can't.
McMahon.
McMahon. I didn't ever watch, I, I never watched, um, who was it? Um, Carson, Johnny Carson.
Carson, yeah.
Was it Ed McMahon?
It was Ed.
Yeah.
It's someone that comes to your house a little.
No, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff, uh, also went, lived here, because he's just one published player.
Somebody, yeah, I've missed my door.
Yeah. All right, to the select board. Unfortunately, I have to resign immediately. My position as alternate on the shellfish committee due to an in-unanticipated external demands on my time. Sincerely, Kim. So, uh, I'd like to move that we accept his resignation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Uh, another resignation that we have, this one is from Richard DeFries, and he writes, I hereby submit my resignation to the RSU twelve school board, effective close of business six ten twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Richard DeFries. Um, he is, uh, on the select board, that's like, the school board, and, um, has, actually has a three-year term, and he is resigning, um, basically, at the end of his second year. So we, before I talk about that, let me just say, I'd like to, um, make motion to accept his resignation. Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Um, so our question is, and April will research, is because this was not um, done before nomination papers went out, we're not sure whether it can be put on the ballot. Is it too late to be put on the ballot? And if not, we'll have to do some research to figure out how do we replace him for the year, because there is still one year term left. So, um, stay tuned to find out what we do with that. All right, um, couple staff announcements. Um, I'm thrilled to say that we received an ASG grant um, for engineering reviews. There'll be two reviews. There'll be one at the, um, fire station, and the other one will be at the ferry, uh, the ferry landing, the, the right house. And that will be on, um, the twenty ninth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we're all set with that, and looking forward to getting his feedback on it. And I'd like to personally thank Gabe for really working on that. Uh, she did a great job, and, uh, thrilled that we received it. Yes.
People, I, what she said that, uh, just turned it up, uh, there were only five eligible applications. And so all five, you got it.
But there were six.
There were six, but one was disqualified.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's, and that was, we both very, which I actually liked a lot, but it was not, um, it was more, it was fine, um.
Yeah, you know, yeah. See, that's the one I didn't think, I didn't think it was.
Yeah.
Was it a minute?
Well.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, so they, so it was one.
Okay.
Point, point is, so, we, because we're concerned that they were pointed by one we'd seen before, maybe it's going to disqualify us, no. So, so I'm very sure about.
That's great.
That's it. That whole borough just got its third or fourth, I don't know.
Yeah.
By this, this as well. West, West Fort Hills is the only one that didn't ask for the full five thousand.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we did, um, ask for thirty-two hundred, and that's what we received. But it's interesting that, um, here they're offering this money, and there were only five applicants too, and they were giving out five awards. So, seems like either people don't know about it, or.
It's a great, it's a great grant, just for just a little kind of exploratory thing.
Like this issue that we had. Yeah, yeah. Because either way, we were required to, um, to do an engineering review, so we could make the town to pay for it, and we would have to. Um, but this ASG grant, um, saves the town some money, because it was definitely an unexpected, um, cost that we would have to deal with. Um, just a reminder, uh, make. Um, just a reminder, uh, May third is the island cleanup, um, we've been doing that every year, the Conservation Commission. Uh nine o'clock, um, come on over and at the town hall, yep. Um, so that word should be getting up pretty soon. And the last thing I have on our list is there will be no board workshops this week. We'll pick them back up again next week, and we'll probably still do the two a week, just because we're planning for our. Um, presentations, which will be on May sixteen and then.
Twenty second.
Okay, I don't have my calendar in front of me. Um.
Is the sign master gonna announce that we not told the sun?
Spencer will.
We all know. That works.
Actually, I know that, I think it was Dennis who sent April a note and said, please, I mean, this is what I want you to say. So he even. Had four lines, and this is what I want to say, so, yes, she's already gotten, yeah.
Can you put a picture of Jimmy Cromwell in the background?
Yeah, it says that that uh people are enjoying the sign.
Yeah, I think, I think it's. It's working better up there or.
Yep.
I have people every day telling me stuff they want to put on the sign. So I'm gonna throw out, one of the options is to. Um, put it out there for somebody in the public on Westport to. Pay a small fee to have a love message, like happy birthday, April, keep up on the sign.
Honey maker.
Three o'clock in the afternoon to seven.
Two hundred.
Where's the hundred dollar?
Yeah, great idea, here, here we go.
Somebody needs to fire it down a little bit, so.
Yeah, that, especially that yellow one, it is.
It's good.
It's hot, I just love the island every day.
I went up the island, I'm like, oh, I gotta come up here and get that signed down, I came back on like, an hour later, it was gone.
Perfect, somebody heard you.
Yeah. Slay the fire department will be okay with that, coming away.
I was gonna bring it down there, it's like, I need approval for the higher up.
Yeah.
Oh, the other sign, a little.
You might be able to use it right here.
Well, they should put it up here. It's a point in time you need to burn it, burning.
Yeah, I, um. I guess we'll need to talk to um Stacy about what what to do with it, so just to confirm that it's okay with that. But April, I do want to say that I noticed, um, when I did go off the island the other day, last week or whatever, that whatever the message was. I read the message, but I don't remember what it was now, it stayed on the whole time, so I noticed that you were.
I try not to switch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's true, guy, one day there was, there was a message on it. By the time I got close enough, I could read it, it went to the wild. Check out what message.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Stretching.
Yeah, so she's fixing that.
Yeah, and I need to turn up the brightness, I think Jeff mentioned.
You're seeing very well. Hitting it, I think, or something.
About six, six thirty, and my goodness, man.
Yeah, I think it's later in the day.
Now that we have a lot we can do with that, with the westerly sun.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I can turn the brightness up quite a bit, but it's tough, because other times it might be jarring, if it's like cloudy out, and I can't be constantly adjusting.
Is there a timer that you could set, like daytime hours describe?
Oh, no, I can do that, but it's not like sensitive, light sensitive, it would be nice if it were to, you know, Japanese outlaw.
Yeah, it would be nice, would they add up ten or twelve thousand dollars?
Cause I don't want you to have to do it on the side all day, but.
Yeah.
If you set it for like, you know. Bottom block or six o'clock, and the sun steps getting lower.
Yeah, you could, you could go back in and manually adjust it, since the daylight has changed a lot, you know. I don't want to.
Okay, uh, I was just gonna ask, anything else before we adjourn?
So just throwing out there, you know how the electrical box is there and it's exposed and. It's not all that attractive, I was thinking, well, maybe we could like build something like a lighthouse and put it over it, or.
Um.
You know, some, yeah, it's, I I understand, do they still have to come out and read it? Yeah, so, yeah, I just thought.
It's actually a community point, uh, just in case you've been attending the video.
Mm-hmm.
So, and so is the, is the chair of our former broadband, we're saying, are we gonna, do you think someone should announce this is coming? And and I think Jason would be. The, and I'm a member of broadband as well, like April was as well, and Ralph, we could, we can, we can help to. Uh, you receive, if you'd like us to do.
Yeah, and I know that April mentioned something, cause I had attended the last meeting, and. That was like at three o'clock and barely got here, and so she did put something in the, um. In the last month's, um.
And we've been spending a couple of meetings.
Yeah.
Minutes and stuff, but, yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure, kind of wonder like. How far should a town go to help a private company, like, you know?
Well, I like the idea that there's. Competition.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we help structure a lot.
Yeah.
We, of course, you now, we, they're just making people aware that they have another option, which is, you know, positive.
Yeah, yeah, I always think.
Such that if, there's a distinct year going, uh, we could, you know, help with that, the examination or confirmation.
Yeah.
So we know where the cutoff point is?
Uh, somewhere down towards east shore road, I think. I think it got, it gets, I think it's as far as the top, that end of, well, west shore road. Uh, but I thought I saw them going all the way down, as far as east shore.
Yeah, it is pretty far down there, I think the first meeting I attended, they talked about, uh, two thirds of the way down. But how far is that? I have no clue, yeah, yeah. Alright, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn for the evening, do I have a second? All in favor? Good night.
Good night, Charlotte, thank you.